Good evening, welcome to the March 18th, 2024, the joint work session between the McMinnville School District Board of Directors and City Council. Welcome, welcome councilors. Before we get started, if it's okay with Mayor, I'd like to ask Counselor Gary and Director Benner to give us just a little historical perspective on how the joint session came about and kind of why we're here tonight, if you would, either one of you feel free to start.
Thank you. Many years ago, goes back to Scott Hill, we started a conversation about a joint session and we got all excited about it and then COVID happened. And but the genesis of the idea really came from Zach and I spending time together and talking about sort of the Venn diagram that is the city and the school and the shared interests that we have and where we overlap, whether it's in property ownership or shared facilities or constituents that have the same needs and and what we can do to improve the communication with that, what can we do to leverage our talents and skills to further each other's goals? And it took, as with every bureaucracy, takes a long time to get that into motion. But once it got into motion, I think this is our third joint meeting. And the goal in my mind still is the same thing. We've got these shared constituencies that we're both doing work for. And sometimes we don't know that the other agency is doing the same thing or potentially working at odds and we don't know that. And so the goal would be to get together on a regular basis and just share what we're doing in the hopes that we can leverage our shared ideas together.
Thank you, Counselor Gary.
Yeah, what he said, perfect. Now, you know, it was one couple of things. One, Carson and I have spent a lot of time together on various things and each individually spent a lot of time with our respective organizations civically or and voluntarily. And it was amazing that when we would have long conversations about what this, you know, you guys are working on or what we're working on, it was clear that even two people who spend so much time working on things had blind spots where the other organization was. And it was just such a nice way to get together and share information. And I was lucky enough to be able to join Carson and shape how we got together. I think I fell into that role because I speak Carson. And so it was very easy to fall into a natural rhythm and push that relationship to set these in motion, but I'm very glad and appreciative that Mayor Drabkin and Chair Bison have kept it going. So thank you very much.
Thank you, we're glad you're here. Just so you know, there's waters and drinks and snacks in the back. And with that, I'd like to call to order the McMinnville School Board of Directors.
Thank you, and I'd like to call to order the McMinnville City Council.
And any announcements?
I do have one announcement as a quick follow up. I just want you all to know that it is very much the intent and preference of the city of McMinnville that we continue to have these meetings and that we have them quarterly. And I understand our gap was simply a scheduling difficulty. And so I think we run too large and efficient organizations. So hopefully we can overcome that scheduling error that happened in the past and make sure that these are happening quarterly. My announcement for everyone out there is that your kiddos still have until Friday to enter their projects in this great city of McMinnville and McMinnville School District Collaboration, which is the If I Were Mayor Student Contest. This is available to high schoolers, middle schoolers and grade schoolers. There's different projects for each, so brought a stack of these here. If you're in the room tonight and you're going back to a classroom or a school or a house with kiddos in it that might get involved, we would love to get even more participation. Last year, when McMinnville started, when we started participating in this program for the first time, one of our kids from Patton actually ended up taking second place in the state contest, which also meant they earned a pretty large monetary reward. And you know, it's the kind of thing that makes a lasting difference in kids' lives. So I'll pass these down so they can kind of get towards the front there. And also if folks are watching this meeting and their kids aren't yet involved, I would would highly suggest you get involved in the If I Were Mayor contest. And again, we have until Friday to get entries in.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
Item two in our agenda is prohibited camping and school impacts. We've scheduled about 45 minutes for a roundtable discussion, which is semi in conjunction with the four hour work session that you all had. And there's nobody really assigned to this agenda item, so I don't know how you would like to start.
Um, sure, I, I think, let's see, we have, um, gosh, I wasn't prepared to tee this up. So let me think about what I'm going to say for one second here. As we know, we have had a 290% increase in homelessness in McMinnville since before the pandemic. We also know that where we've previously had voluntary compliance with our ordinance, then we've lost voluntary compliance for a lot of the areas that have been identified as problem areas or that are prohibited campsites. And so, uh, as it relates to this meeting, one of those areas that we're all aware of is the area of McDaniel Lane, where our ordinance, as intended, the ordinance that the city brought forward many years ago, that was actually designed with both letting people know where they can be and where they cannot be. That ordinance is designed was meant to encapsulate all of the schools and all of our schools are in residential zones. There are two areas where residential zone intersects with a non-residential zone. And one of those areas, of course, is that intersection next to McDaniel, where we've had generally ongoing issues with non-compliance of our ordinance. Because even though overnight camping was allowed in that area, those campsites should have been cleared first thing in the morning and that hasn't happened. Now, if anybody's driven McDaniel over the last couple of weeks, you'll actually see that we currently do have generally, I think, voluntary compliance with that. About 24, I mean, we're, every time I've driven it, it's been clear. I don't want to say 24 hours a day because I'm not there 24 hours a day. But as that pro, as that campsite on McDaniel was continuing to create a large issue, we have been engaged in a lot of conversations, both in the community and with the school district. And the school district, of course, has an added interest in the areas where students are moving to get to their classrooms. So we have a shared interest in the safety of our children. And not that somebody's state of housing makes them unsafe, but we all know that in these specific areas, we were having major issues with sanitation. We were having major issues with needles and garbage. And it was creating an unsafe passageway, it has been creating an unsafe passageway when we were not getting voluntary compliance with the ordinance. And so I think that's kind of the genesis of how we came here. We've, we've worked very hard to do a lot of education throughout the community and especially about what different laws allow us or don't allow us to do. We've tried to communicate that out. And being that this is an area of shared interest, it is on the topic tonight or it's on the agenda tonight. That's the history and that gets us to right now. So if there's anything you'd like to add?
No, well said, very much so. I guess the question from our, from the board's perspective or the district's perspective is, at that four hour meeting, there was talk of continuing to be open to encouraging those safe zones or buffer zones around schools. And I believe all councilors were in agreement that that would be something that would be looked at or continue to be talked about.
Do we have a proposed ordinance here this evening, right?
We've got some language that we can share. We don't have a fully written ordinance for the bodies to look at, though.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that the, there's a, there's something that was suggested by a community group that the school district has also pursued. There's the best case and worst case scenario of pursuing this change. The best case is that it continues to message out to the community that this is not an area where people should be sleeping overnight for the reasons that I already stated. And so best case scenario is that expanding or changing the ordinance would lead to voluntary compliance, voluntary compliance like we are getting currently. But that it would lead to kind of continued or ongoing voluntary compliance to help alleviate pressure in these areas. The worst case scenario is it doesn't entice that voluntary compliance. And then, of course, it doesn't actually give us any additional enforcement tools. So worst case scenario is we are in the same situation. We have indicated that we'd like additional space around the schools, but if people are not complying, our enforcement isn't able to change because of this, because of this change. And then, of course, the additional worst case scenario is it does also open the city up at risk for a lawsuit. So worst case scenario is it's ineffective and the city gets sued. Best case scenario is that the suggestion and change in language of the ordinance is more enticing or maybe just more clear of a rule for people to understand.
Yeah, and I think, and I don't want to speak for superintendent, but one of our concerns is that it's long lasting and the point in time now is great. It looks wonderful, but someday I'm gone, you're gone, maybe superintendent's gone. We have something to fall back on that gives us precedent or some sort of continued enforcement. And you know, chief's retiring and there's changes that happen all the time. And so I just didn't know if there was something that was going to be brought before this board or this body to a first reading or what's the next step?
Well, first reading would happen in front of the city council, of course. The school board does not govern the city of McMinnville. So we agreed to bring forward some language, but honestly, this is, this is an agenda item we were asked to bring forward. So I don't, I'm not really set to carry the, carry the, carry the load on it. As our city manager mentioned, we have some draft language. And I guess the interest of the city would be, does this draft language kind of resolve the school board's concerns? And to me, it's very important that the school board also understands that this does not change our ability to enforce. And, and I think that's a very important point because it's already getting mis-messaged out. It's already getting mis-messaged out in the public. And so I just, I, I don't want to set false expectations for what we're able to do as a city based on this draft language. Counselor, Council President?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Chair Bison. Just for those in the audience and for us, do we have the ability to project the buffer zone up on the screen or up on the board behind us?
I don't know the answer to that question. I can't speak for the technology in the room.
We, we would need the computer of whoever, I think, to plug in, right?
Hey, Matt, can you pull it up from the last presentation? If we get the computer up and running? The map that we shared during the work session?
I know, was it in the slide deck?
It was a separate document. Maybe Claudia, are you looking for it now? All right, Claudia's working on that.
Thank you, sorry about that. And second question would be, in our draft language, is there a buffer foot recommendation right now by staff or was that going to be policy discussion?
So we, we've got some language that we can present to you tonight. I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Leitenberg to do that. One of the things that we recognize is that a majority of school board was present for the four hour work session and maybe the rest of the school board was able to watch the meeting. We know Superintendent Rocket was able to watch the meeting. We didn't plan staff presentation tonight because we felt like there should be an opportunity for the elected officials to have a conversation around this issue. And so we're here to answer questions. We'll try to get the map up for you to take a look at. But the, the goal was really to give the two bodies the chance to have a policy level discussion about what might make sense for both bodies as opposed to any sort of a staff heavy presentation tonight. So that, that wasn't our plan. We were hoping to be able to facilitate the conversation and, and provide answers to questions.
Understood, thank you, Jeff. I'll turn it back over to the mayor and it looks like you got a couple of other questions.
For the purposes of sort of starting the conversation currently, where there is, or where there was overnight camping, it was illegal. And so if we were to change the buffer zone, it would just be illegal under two statutes, correct?
And I, I don't want to answer on behalf of our attorney, but it would be the same, it would be the same ordinance. It would be changing our existing ordinance, so it would be the same amount illegal. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I like the term the same amount illegal.
I am not totally sure that I have the question right. So if I am going in the wrong direction, please correct me. But I think if you are talking about those locations that are next to schools that didn't seem to currently fit in here, the, the violation that they were making is one that's in effect throughout the city of McMinnville. And that's the time regulation, right? After 6:30 in the morning, camping is illegal, no matter where you are. And though those two locations that are adjacent to schools, but not otherwise prohibited 24/7 by the code, still fit in that requirement. So yes, in those places, it would have been illegal after 6:30 in the morning to be camping. And it always has been. Establishing a school buffer zones would, if it's worded correctly, would make those areas outlawed for camping 24/7.
And I understand we don't want to get something wrong, but it, is there, is there any reason not to just try that? I guess that's what we're here to discuss.
There are a lot of answers to that question. The, the biggest answer, the broadest answer that I think that I can provide is yes, this is entirely possible. We can, we can write that language and make it illegal here. The opposing concern, besides sort of the direct concerns that the mayor already addressed, are that as we say more and more, there are places where camping is always illegal. At some point, we have not left enough places where camping is allowed. And both the state and currently the US Constitution say that we have to provide space where camping is allowed.
So the risk is to the city that we get sued for having an unconstitutional system, which has its own, of course, other reverberations, which is that McMinnville gets sued for having an unconstitutional system for the way that we engage with our unhoused population. So I, I think there are some risks to that as well. I would say the other thing that I haven't really brought forward yet, but it really popped out to me in the work session, especially when we talked about, especially when our community development director was presenting and she talked about the work that we've done through our McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission. And I stopped and grabbed some of my rough notes because she, she went through this list of projects we've done, getting this youth drop in center here, doubling the number of housing vouchers for veterans, creating a permanent plan for tiny houses that's on file and available to anybody in our building department, the safe overnight parking program, which is not what you see on the street. These are discreet sites on private property around the city that you don't know exists. Our investment in Project Turnkey, which started as overnight emergency shelter, our navigation center, which is under construction, our assistance in expanding the Gospel Rescue Mission, our involvement in getting Stratus Village, which is a housing authority project off the ground, and our continued support of Operation Generation, which isn't fully funded yet. I think the other thing here is this would be one of the, this is the first time we'd be approaching this ordinance with a different value set or a different value system from my perspective. All of these other efforts have been really focused on creating situations to help people end their homelessness and creating opportunities for people to access shelter. So all of the ordinance changes that we've gone through have been kind of co-created with that. We were letting people know where they couldn't be while we were also trying to be very specific about where they could be. So that, that would be the only other kind of non-tangible thing is that what we're, the action that you're asking the council to take is really just about telling people where they can't be or, or limiting the, you know, that, that access. And again, when we first brought this ordinance forward, it was our intent to have this buffer around the school zones, right? That we didn't, we, the, these two intersections, the one being McDaniel, where we have a problem, is, it, it was intended to be consumed in that original ordinance from years ago. But that came forward at a time where we were also providing sheltering and housing options. Question on the, when you bring up it's not more or less, more legal or less legal. There were several court precedents that were shared during that four hour session. And I know that there is some concern if we push this too far that it potentially, that lawsuit, not just that the city gets sued, but the lawsuit opens up overturning the ordinances that we currently have. So I guess my question would be, as we look at this language and or we look at the expansion of these buffers, you know, that are we considering being careful about that? Obviously, we don't want to undo the work that has happened to create these buffer zones and to create these ordinances that have had, you know, some positive impact on, you know, how we're keeping the streets a little safer and cleaner.
If I could follow up, that, I think that the idea that we, the city council some time ago said that these areas shouldn't have camping. And we thought, or at the time, people thought that that would cover the schools and we could get, get that covered by this ordinance. It seems like we can't, I mean, I appreciate we need to protect the rights of the homeless. At the same time, we're doing all of this work to provide resources to them, the same as the school board is doing all sorts of stuff for our homeless population. And so it, 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 because I don't want those people interfering with our ability to kids, for kids to come to school does not mean that I don't care about their wherewithal. But, but if we intended, the city council intended to have those areas protected and now we can go back and protect them, it seems like the right thing to do.
Yes, I think the difference that I want you to note is that when, if you're looking at this map that's on the screen, the areas that are in red, those are the only areas where people can park right now. And we don't have adequate shelter beds. If we had adequate shelter beds, if we'd spend all this time and all this energy and we'd constructed more shelter beds, we could tell people, you go to the shelter bed. If you don't go to the shelter bed, then we can, then, then there's an enforcement action. So the difference is, is that now we have this smaller scope of, of area and this would be impacting what is currently available. So kind of the intent of the council, and that was, and I mean, that was my work with the McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission. This ordinance happened with me chairing that committee. So regardless of what our intent may have been, the fact that we didn't get those areas covered, this is a system change, right? So that's, that's where that risk factor comes in. Because the, 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 those who would be concerned with the constitutionality of our ordinance aren't going to be concerned with the intent of the council in 2019. Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wrote down some notes here. So first, Mayor, I appreciate you iterating through a lot of the positive steps that the city has taken to improve people's lives who are coping with homelessness. In my opinion, those ordinances go hand in glove with ordinances to reduce community harm and to strengthen public safety. I think we, I agree with you, I definitely agree with you that we need to be mindful about the need to, of not falling in the trap of painting every member of the houseless community with the same negative brush. The people that I know who are the largest newly created category of homeless in recent years have been senior citizens. And I see a lot of people who are seniors in this community that have lost housing. I think that, like you said, Mayor, the lack of lawful places for people to camp is what exposes our city to a lawsuit. I don't think that an ordinance to create a safe route to school will create a problem that is legally indefensible, provided that it's a well crafted ordinance, primarily because there seems to be a clear policy nexus between safety concerns, between creating safe routes to schools as a priority for federal government, for state government, and I think for local government. And we certainly receive that direction in terms of the spending programs that we go for. There's a lot of funding related to safe routes to schools in general. So I do think that there's a clear legitimate policy nexus. I do have a few caveats. I've had a conversation with our attorney, Mr. Leitenberg, and pointed out that the city has, prior to the legal framework shifting to make, to create more rights for homeless people since the Boise decision and since the state changed its laws to create more rights. Prior to that, the city had lost enforcement attempts of our camping ordinance. Like, we, we were one of the first cities in Oregon to start making changes to camping ordinances because we lost that legal decision right before I got on council six, seven years ago. So I do have a few caveats that I think we should consider from a policy perspective. The first is that I know that there are a large number of McMinnville public school students who are currently homeless. Last year, I heard the number was probably around 300 on any given night. I don't know if that's accurate still, but I think that that's probably fairly accurate. And I would be interested in knowing whether the school district or the city has any kind of analysis of whether any of the students currently in the school district were living in that area that we're talking about, expanding the ban on overnight camping. I, I, so I, I think that from my perspective, what I see people when they're camping, they're not there because of the school, they're there because there's bathrooms and there's a park. And so people are chasing services, people are chasing restroom facilities and people are chasing a place where they can lawfully be in the, in the, in the summer, cool in the summer. And my fear is, in general, and I realize that this is, we're trying to solve a problem for the school district tonight, but in general, one of the concerns that I have is that the buffers that we've pushed people out towards are not safe in the summer. There's no shade, there's not, you know, they're just not, in terms of heat and dealing with those kinds of emergencies, we put, push people out to the outskirts of town. But then in the inside of town is where the cooling shelters are and the warming shelters are and those kinds of things. So I do have that concern. Now, that being said, I don't think any of this should stop us from expanding the buffer. I do think that if we're going to expand the buffer, we should do an analysis on whether or not there's students actually living inside that area. And if there are, maybe we figure out language, if, if we, if Mr. Leitenberg can figure that out to create the type of exclusion in the limited area where it's currently allowed, not to expand further rights. And that's all I have, thank you for listening.
Counselor Peralta, would the point in time count have that?
The mayor would be a better person to ask.
No.
No, they don't do ages or?
They do, they do ages, but not specifically where people are residing. And also it's a transient population. So I, I think the only person that could really respond to that would be either, well, either police officers or school, school personnel that are actively out there and engaging with folks, yeah.
Dr. Buckett?
I would just like to say, as part of the school district, anytime we identify a family that is houseless, we immediately refer them to McKinney-Vento because we do have resources that will get them a place to stay and we can provide those services. So we work very actively in ensuring that as we identify houseless, that we refer them through our McKinney-Vento Act and try to get them permanent housing of some sort. So that is our ultimate goal. At this time, having spoken to Martha, who spends the most time over there, we have not identified students who live in any of those current, that were the more frequent parkers in that area. We had never identified a student in that area. My biggest concern from a school district is not only that there's camping there and it makes for unsafe passage that way, but I had staff members, including my athletic director, they had to go walk the field, right by the baseball field, and ensure that all of the unsafe items were cleaned up because as we're hitting baseballs foul, parents were very concerned that the kids would go to retrieve a baseball that is right there on our parking area and run into some kind of safe situation, be it a needle or the feces that was being dumped there in the field. Very concerning to us because we have to extend not only the time to and from school, but that's a baseball field right there that is used all summer long and used throughout the school year at all times. And so that was a major concern. But the question going back to whether we have kids there, we have yet to identify, Martha's here, a single student of ours that live in that area. And if we did, we would immediately send our houseless coordinator over to help work with those families to get them permanent housing through our McKinney-Vento Act. So we have other resources to assist our families. So I'm, I wouldn't be as concerned about that because if we did identify anyone at any time in any houseless area that we can provide services to, we send out David Conno, his team, and we try to get him hooked up with McKinney-Vento.
Thank you.
Counselor Payne?
Sorry, not used to my turning off. If I might add, as an active and very involved resource, which is now the name for foster parent, there are and have been McMinnville School District students identified by DHS in the houseless community and taken into DHS custody to be removed from, not necessarily the houseless population, like house, being houseless wasn't the element of jurisdiction, but they were in, living among the houseless.
Yeah, I think at the, I think in the 2020 point in time, or 2019 point in time count, I think it was about 40% of those counted were under the age of 18, if I remember correctly.
Uh, City Manager Tauri?
Let me just give you orientation to the graphic that's up on the screen. The mayor gave you a partial orientation, but let me walk you through the whole thing. So we've identified all of the schools inside the city of McMinnville, and what you see in the shaded areas around the school are buffers from the property perimeter of 250 feet, 500 feet, and 1,000 feet. The streets are in three colors, black are residential streets where parking is prohibited, or in a couple of other areas like downtown and the Urban Renewal Agency. Red and yellow streets are streets where overnight camping is allowed. The streets in yellow don't physically accommodate camping. There's no parking strip or there are ditches, there are no sidewalks, and so while it's lawful to camp on a yellow area, there's no physical space to safely camp. And so the red marks are the streets where overnight camping is currently allowed. And so any, any red chunks of street that you see that are covered by one of the three buffer areas are the areas where overnight camping would not be allowed if we were to establish buffer zones.
Thank you, and I think that's a good launch that really, you know, the councils, clearly, I mean, we, we, we created this agenda, we put this on here, we're here for conversation. So, you know, this is really our opportunity from here from the school board, as it relates to schools and as the council's considering changing this ordinance, what type of changes specifically is the school board interested in for the council to consider? I, I think that's really the best place for us to go. Otherwise, I think we could just kind of talk for the whole night, and we have a, four more agenda items, so.
It would, from my perspective, it would seem that we should explore the expansion of the buffer zones. I also understand the complicating factor of enforcement and not having the city, perhaps not having the ability to enforce a broader area that would need enforcing, but I think it's something that we should definitely consider, is, is the expansion of the buffer zones around the schools.
And, and do you mind, everyone, giving your feedback as to the specific expansion that you would be interested in as well? The, the shaded zones, again, those are 250, 500, and 1,000-foot buffers.
I, I don't know that I have enough information to make an educated guess on that, and the reason why is because it's still going to come under enforcement. And so the broader the area for enforcement, the more you might need. So if that's not good thinking on my part, then I would.
Yeah, I actually think, I think we need some clarity on the enforcement. So, so, so what this would, what a, what this would change would be whether or not somebody could camp overnight in any of those areas. Currently, people are not allowed to be there 24 hours a day, even though that's what's occurring. It is not our inability to send an officer or officers to respond, although we do also have an exceptionally high call volume, and sometimes that capacity is a, is a, is a factor. But when we're talking about our ability to enforce, the takeaway is not whether or not we're getting officers there, it's what those officers are able to do once they respond to the site. And what this specific suggestion does not do is change how the officer responds. Now, there was something that came up in the work session, and it's on our agenda as well for us to talk about because we did get, hear some things in that four-hour work session that actually would change our ability to respond, so we'll, we'll get there on the agenda as well. But that is what we're talking about when we talk about enforcement. So whether, so 1,000-foot buffer, 500, 250, or no expansion, same thing, we get a call in, an officer responds, and then they go into their enforcement process, and it's the enforcement process that would not change. And as much as people can be specific about buffers that they would be interested in seeing or specific changes for the council to consider, that would, that will really help us as well when, when possible.
So, so then to answer your question, I would, I would be in favor of the 1,000-feet.
And just for clarification, the superintendent has requested from the city, I believe, 250?
That was my original. I understand the complications with the city, and what we don't want to do is ask for such a far expansion that we do put the city at risk. What we are asking for is enough safety around our schools that we don't have to worry about our athletes cleaning up the field or facing any of that, as well as our students going to and from school. And when they're right next to, as if you guys have ever driven down McDaniel's as a perfect example, literally, they set their nose of their vehicle right up to the baseball field, right where the school campus begins. So I would say no minimum, no, no less than 250, but I would listen to the board. If we got the 250, I believe it would put less risk for the city, and I do want to take that into consideration, but at the same time, give us enough distance to ensure the campus directly, or the land directly near our campus is free from the unsafe situation which our students face now.
Counselor Payne?
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you. As I look at it, I only see one spot that would, might encroach on the 250 zone area. Am I correct on that?
Uh, no, I believe the.
Can we point out the areas that would be, the camping areas that would fall within the 250?
I believe the two areas are McDaniel and Booth Bend.
That's correct.
No, I, I get that, but as I look at it, it's hard to tell from the shading. I'll, I'll just be honest.
Yeah. I think Booth Bend is only affected in the 1,000-foot, uh, actually, and, um.
But as I look at the other one, I mean, I could see it at 500, but I don't really see it's affecting it at 250. Am I incorrect on that? Staff?
You are correct that the only way you get all the way up to 99W on McDaniel is to go to 1,000 feet.
Just to go where?
To 1,000-foot buffer. It's the only way you get to 99W on McDaniel.
Okay. So 250-foot buffer would not take out any of the camping areas, correct? Am I assuming that's correct?
It would move at 250 feet from the property line of the baseball field.
A portion.
Okay.
Well, there's. Ed Gate to like maybe the entrance of the cul-de-sac.
Yes.
But not quite to the mat club.
Chair Bazan, may I ask a clarifying question of the superintendent?
Counselor Chinowitz?
The only place I see is this little hanging down place, right?
So my question to you, you said your greatest concern is the baseball field. And that's definitely a concern to me, but also so is the kids walking to school. And so I, I wonder if, if we don't end up clearing that path, is 250 feet really going to accomplish what you want to accomplish?
This would be much easier to see on a Google overhead map. I am horrible with maps anyway, so this makes absolutely no sense to me completely. What we're trying to do is most of the students who come to us from in the McDaniel area over to Patton, many of them walk through the park, down a pathway, and I only learned this when we were doing and looking into possibly getting crosswalks over there to make the crossing safe. And right now, they would get through that park, come out right where the restrooms are there at the park and come across, and that puts them right directly in the middle of all of the houseless parking that we have there and much of the unsafe environment that is, is formed around that area, including the fires that we've had to send Martha over to put out near that, that area. So that entire area, and I don't know from, because I'm thinking that where the baseball fence is, so if I had that Google map, Mr. Crane, and can actually show where we are through a better idea, he's like my Google map, can you bring that up for me, Mr. Crane? Just to show us that area on McDaniel, because I think then somebody who understands these light blue, dark blue, purple could probably give us a better idea of where that zone would sit, especially because we're asking those questions.
So you don't have, you know, like across 99 West, up past McDonald's apartment complex and duplexes and all kinds of, of housing that I would anticipate would include children that are trying to make their way from those facilities to the school? You don't have that traffic coming across the light and then down by the field that way?
We do. Um, I am taking all into consideration, I have to emphasize that Mayor Dropkin, myself, Jeff, and Chair Bazan have really worked on making sure that what we ask for is doable without costing the city, and also taking into consideration what we're asking doesn't put the city at a higher level of risk, which makes it impossible. So personally, the 250, when we first went out and did the crosswalk walk with whoever Mayor Dropkin sent me with, we looked at those areas being of our highest concern, especially when that is all forming directly around our school area. And we have other options if we don't get a further buffer zone to continue to look at, but I think it's looking at exactly where that would end. And again, I'm going to be honest, is I want to protect our students, but I also want to make sure we don't put us, ourselves in a position where all of a sudden we are under lawsuit because we've taken all parking away, and now we have no jurisdiction. So that's all I'm, of course, we would all like 1,000 feet just because that sounds like the, however, we have to look at both sides. I want to make sure we get, keep our kids safe and at the same time, don't end up putting the city at risk in which they can't ride an ordinance around due to the legalities behind it, because I understand both of those.
And I greatly appreciate your concern. I just would, would say we're not taking away all the parking options available. There's still, in fact, even at the 1,000-foot level, the amount of square footage of street space that we're taking away isn't a huge amount in comparison to what's still available. I would also add, on the legal front, that we do need to keep in mind that where we stand today is potentially going to radically change as the Supreme Court takes up the docket item they have in front of them. So, um, that doesn't mean we want to go jumping out ahead of it and putting ourselves in a dangerous position either, I get that. So anyways, thank you for clarifying that for me.
And I think Counselor Chinowitz and Mr. Crane's at the podium, but there is no bus services beyond, behind Wilco. I think it extends that far, that there is no bus transportation offered by the district through those apartments all the way behind Wilco. Am I correct on that, Ms. Crane?
Yeah, there, there are some bus service in that neighborhood behind that Wilco, well, Wilco area that goes to Washer, actually. There's actually behind, Jim Doran is over that Daffodil area is kind of the Washer area.
But what's, what's the distance from Patton to the first bus service to Patton?
I would have to get that information for you. I'm not, so in middle school, secondary, we do a mile and a half.
Okay.
And then in elementary school, it's a mile or more. So it's a mile and a half or more in middle school, high school for transportation services. So this is, this is McDaniel right here. So if you went out to the 1,000-foot, it would encompass half of the parking lot of Wortman Park that's on the Lafayette Avenue side. So what Councilman Chinowitz was talking about is this route right here, which is along McDonald, which a whole bunch of kids walk from the Grand Haven neighborhoods down McDonald over to Patton. They cross Highway 99, I mean, every day. I was a principal there for eight years and I've watched them all walk. And also from the high school, a lot of kids walk this road up from the high school at that 315, 325 mark, and they walk north up to the Grand Haven homes up there. So it's hard to see on the screen up there, but you can see this lighter color that's in here is the 200-foot mark. This little thinner band, it looks purple on my screen, kind of looks purplish on yours right here, that would be the limit of the 500-foot mark, and then this darker blue area out here is the 1,000-foot mark. So just for some kind of clarification, so someone mentioned Buell here. Yes, the 1,000-foot is kind of what would encompass that Booth Bend road down here by Buell that's currently in red on Booth Bend, but the 250 and the 500 may not encompass those.
And, and Director Crane is former middle school principal. Has it been your experience that kids would walk to McDonald to avoid McDaniel?
Yes, there are kids who will walk up to the highway and over to go around to get to their apartment complex because there's apartments over there. I can't remember the name of them off the top of my head right now, but on the, on this far, let's see, right up in here, there's some apartments off of 99, and the kids will come through Wortman and then cross through the backside of Patton, kind of in the field back there by the baseball field, but a lot of them would walk 99 around to get over here to this side.
Thank you.
So I'm going to kind of bring this back to where we were. We had envisioned about 45 minutes for this portion of the agenda, and we're at about 50 minutes, so I would still appreciate if we could loop back with the school board members and hearing kind of the specificity the school board is asking of the council and changes.
I really appreciated the work session. I learned a lot from hearing from your staff and all of the efforts that they've put into that. I also got a better understanding of all of the limitations of what can and cannot be done. I think that the 500-foot buffer for me seems like would provide more safety for our students, and I would appreciate trying that. I would also be open to other ideas if we are able to come up with any outside of the limitations that we've seen. You know, we've brought up other crossing guards or what the school can do or what community members can do, and it seems like there's a lot of limitations there as well, not just with staffing, but with, you know, if we're legally allowed to put on vests and become a crossing guard. So 500-foot buffer zone would be my request.
And, and just so I'm clear, the next steps, that's what you want from, from this body is direct feedback?
Well, yeah, I, I understand that this body is requesting that the city change one of its ordinances, so I would like to understand those specific requests. And then, you know, I, I actually would have loved to have talked about the other thing first, but we are going to talk about some of the other things that came up in this work session, and for me, one of them is the public health conversation where we actually, you know, the. And for me, one of them is the public health conversation where we actually, you know, where we do have some other, other tools. Potentially available, but unless, unless everybody thinks I'm kind of off my rocker here, I think if, if you're requesting a change, understanding the exact. Request is, is what makes the most sense to me.
May I, Mayor?
Please.
I guess I have a question for David and this is. I get stuck in sort of. Hearing a lot of kind of like all or nothing. In this case, we have a few campuses that are contiguous and. I wonder if there's an opportunity for, to say something like. When there's 20 or more contiguous acres, that the buffer be 1,000 feet. Versus if it's 12 acres or less, that it be 250 feet. And that would in effect to reduce the buffer on something like the Buell campus or. The Memorial Campus so that we're not. Limiting the spaces where people can camp. You know, we're not taking away everything by just kind of wiping the slate with, with 1,000 feet everywhere.
Just, I guess to add to that commentary, you're going to get about 25 acres or so with every elementary school? I understand that. I'm just saying generally speaking, that's kind of our footprint. So. Some of the other elementary schools are bigger and smaller. So if you want to divide it by acreage. Certainly Patton has more acreage there. And then, then again, the high school has more acreage too. So. But it, but each, we don't have a standard. We don't have a standard footprint for. What we do, although we know we need more acreage for a high school than we do an elementary school. So they, that, that would vary. I think. And, and certainly the kids that are walking are typically. For elementary. To the smallest campuses are the ones probably we would want to protect the most. They're the most vulnerable too. So.
I'd like to just. Chair Bazan mentioned that I said 250 feet, which I did of school campuses. And along designated McMinnville School District Walk Zones was my other ask. That is a. Ordinance in another city in which they have passed. So along the walk zones, 250 feet away from the schools, but also along the walk zones to and from schools where my, was my specific ask. When I came forward to the city, just so the whole board understands that. I knew I put 250 in, but I'm like, gosh, I thought there was more to it. And there was, I just looked up the letter and I did ask for the 250 feet. And along specific walk zones that we know students frequent.
Thank you. Can I follow up to that real quick? Because I've just been reading the actual transportation system plan appendix J, which has all of those on there. Did you look at that appendix J in the TSP that has the official walk zones and make that recommendation based off of what, looking at all those roads?
Well, I did a lot of research. I don't know the specific. I can look back through my letter and see if I referenced it.
Okay. That's like every road. I mean, it's.
It is.
It's almost every road on here is officially designated. If you, if you were to overlay all of those roads. I mean, I just want to understand if that is what you're saying. To officially look at all of the, each school's walk to school route and base a buffer off of each of those schools. It's. There's, there's a few roads that are left off of that list.
Well, we already have. Seven of the nine schools caught up in the residential, non-parking due to residential zoning. So that doesn't change. It's caught up in a different ordinance. Because you can't camp in a residential area. So we're addressing two schools, which is Buell and Patton. That aren't caught up that this ordinance would be written around. On top of what is already in place. So there's no parking. Anywhere that the students walk, knowing that the miles that we, we have, if I'm correct, within the residential parking. Of neighborhoods. Am I correct on that? Or did I word that wrong, Zach?
Oh, I, I'm just trying to. Understand when you officially say this walk to school route, so you're referring to. That what we have officially designated in our transportation system plan as each schools walk to school route?
No, I would be referring back to if we were going to add this ordinance, because like I said, the schools right now. That are already covered. We have seven of the nine already covered with the residential. And outside of 1,000 feet, a little bit more, we start to get busing for students. So. It's just the one walking to Patton came up and it was just a recommendation, but I wanted to share that so the whole board understands. Where my 250 feet came from, was if we could also close down the walking zones to schools.
Okay, that's on now. I have a question for you, Chair Brockett, if I may. Was the idea behind the 250, 500, 1,000 safe routes to schools? Based on. Based on a, a different ordinance in another place or the reason I ask is because it seems like we're talking a lot about these zones. When what you're really interested in is a few areas within those zones. And so is that just an attempt to create a facially fair? Facially neutral way to speak about this?
Yeah. So when I started to work on this, I went to see what other school does. I was charged working with Mayor Drapkin, trying to come up with ideas. On talking to other superintendents on what they do in other districts to keep. The homeless population, keep their schools safe from homeless park or park, parking around schools. So when I started to speak to them, I was able to speak to a few of the superintendents. Literally told by those that continue to face the problem without any kind of ordinance around schools, you're not going to be able to address it. So then I went and talked to the ones I did, and that's where it was so mixed. It's from 100 feet, 500 feet, 250 feet, 1,000 feet and walking zones. So just looking at the two areas we have, we have the unsafe McDaniel. And the kids crossing over that can go down McDonald, they're protected down McDonald. So that's a totally different conversation. We're really looking down the McDaniel zone. Where we do have videos that have been sent to me and I know shared with Chair Bazan where students are close to being hit by cars. And we have that on video and we do have on video. So that's where it came from is where can we, and I'm open to that. That's my, both boards can make that determination. A safe zone around those two schools so that our students can pass safely to school.
So again, just to clarify, that was a long, a long way of saying basically McDaniel.
Yes, and I never said the entire McDaniel. That's more, but that would be a walking zone. Yes.
But if, but if, if we took care of McDaniel, then that would solve the, the problem that you're asking us to solve with regard to the zones.
Without leaving open Buell. I don't want to close down Daniel and not address Buell because that could be our next. Problem. And we don't want to close down one and then be back to you guys in a year and go, oh, let's look at Buell now. We have two schools that aren't being covered right now through the safety zone. And I think it's fair that those two schools have the same safe passage to school is the other seven schools.
Then I have a question for Mr. Leitenberg. Is there a facially fair way for you to construct an ordinance that just adds in those two? Specific streets into the time, place and manner restrictions under a, a safe routes to school. Policy basis, given that that's what the school district, it seems to me is saying, we want these two areas to be part of a safe route to school?
We could just name roads or sections of roads. Yes.
So we could, we could take the existing area, existing time, place and manner restriction, add the two areas that are. Being requested without doing the 50 feet, 500 feet, 1,000 feet, getting into that whole. Bit of conversation, but that would appear to me to solve the. The issue of the schools.
Yes, we could.
Okay, thank you.
And I see Counselor Chenoweth has a thought and then. Sorry, it's hard not to say counselor or commissioner. Towery, director. Thank you. Director Towery after that.
My only concern with that idea, I love it, but my only concern with that idea is that assumes the school district never grows. If they build out at any point in time and we've only targeted X land or X land. By street name as opposed to something that's covering an area around the schools. Then we might find ourselves in the same exact predicament with the next build out of a school. So I would think it would be better to stay with the concept that's around, that, that's the zone around the school. Plus it's 20 other cities have followed that pattern already. So it seems like a safer approach and a longer term approach.
It's a longer term approach, but it's not a safer approach, at least in terms of immediate litigation. And we don't know if and when the district is going to put new. Areas up, but we know that there's, you know, probably going to be an area near Fox Ridge. Where there will be commercial near a school district. But outside of that, you know, we don't know how far off that planning is. And really what we're trying to do is solve a problem now with minimum risk.
Yeah, I get your point. I just, I don't, I don't like. I get your point. We can have this conversation. We don't need to waste this time for this conversation. We do that with the council, but I, I just don't get the idea. I'm not a fan of short-term solutions. I like longer-term solutions.
And Counselor Chenoweth, we just were, were unlikely to see another school for, unfortunately, for quite a long time. Unless we get more housing. And then more people will move here.
Well, I have good news on that front, but yeah, but.
Well, I, I like the direction Counselor Payne was leaning on this. And I guess my question would be. As we. If we're looking at, can we look at those two particular areas? As related to Subuol and to Patton. One, in the language, but two, I guess my question would be. The percentage or amount of roads that would be in that particular corridor. What is that? So how much are we taking away? And, and that thought process, process in consideration of, does it put us at greater jeopardy of. Risking a lawsuit that then jeopardizes all of the ordinances that have been put in place, which is kind of where I was going back to my initial comment. You know, I know that several suits have been brought already. That potentially jeopardize work that other cities were doing in the state of Oregon and surrounding areas. So. You know, I would, I would be for certainly doing a buffer. But tightening it up. I mean, 1,000 feet, I, I would be concerned and even 500 feet would be concerned that it puts. Us at jeopardy of undoing years of work to try and tame this down a little bit. And knowing that obviously housing is in, in play now. Not nearly what we need sitting on the urban renewal committee. But we're at least starting to make some strides to get folks in stable housing with support services wrapped around them. Which has an impact on what that camping is going to look like in the future.
Thank you, Director Towery. If I may, Mayor?
Please.
I know the map's not up anymore, but when you get to that thousand foot buffer, you, you actually accomplish a safe walking passage. From McDaniel and McDonald off of 99W. And you do have apartment complexes on both sides of those streets. On 27th from McDaniel to McDonald, it is all apartments. As well, as well as there's duplexes behind Chuck Colvin Ford. The thing that hasn't been talked about is there is a commercial area, which is over by the old school district maintenance facilities. And the only way you encompass that is with that thousand foot buffer. So if we're really wanting to keep safe passage, and when you look at the, the flow of students. At eight in the morning or three in the afternoon, they definitely do use Evans and 19th. They definitely do use McDaniel. They definitely do use McDonald. And so the only way to actually accomplish what the school district is asking for is a thousand foot buffer.
Thank you for the comments tonight. I think we'll close this out. I do. I will close it out by just saying that, you know, we've talked a lot about lawsuits and litigation and I just want this body to know that the district has an obligation to, to the kids. And we have a risk matrix too, that we have to take into consideration when we talk about our students getting to school safely. And I know that that cuts both ways, but it is why we were elected and were voted here and trying to do what's best for our organization and our children.
Right. Well, if we're ready to move on and, and again, I mean, I opened saying this, but I think just given your comments, it's poignant to say that. The city council shares the goal of having safe routes to schools for our children. And what my prerogative is, is to have effective policy that gives us the ability to create that. And doesn't take away from our ability to create it. And, and, and that's, that's really what's. At risk. Are you ready, Chair, to move on to another potential impact solution?
Ready.
You want me to tee it up again? You, you, you got the center seat here.
Item number three, capital bonding project?
No, the, I'm not sure why it's not on your printed. The other, the other thing that we spoke about in our agenda. No, not that either. The other thing that we talked about in creating this agenda, and maybe this was, maybe we were supposed to encapsulate it in here. In this conversation already was that it became clear that in that work session, that the very things that. Dr. Brockett mentioned at the beginning, needles and feces. That those things create an unsafe public health. Environment. We, we can all see that. And we have another. The thing that we haven't discussed is that what would change our enforcement or our officers' ability to respond in a different way. Would be if there, if, if public health were able to. Clearly declare that there was a public health issue in those areas at that time. And, and so that is a, when we talked about alternates, there's actually many alternates. We've been engaged and see if there's potential of rezoning that property, the surrounding properties, which would create the same result. Doesn't carry the other risks with it. And then we had had quite an extensive conversation, you and I about. Asking these bodies if we could collectively go to the county and ask for them to partner with us in sending out public health officials. So that when we get a call or a complaint, we can get a public health response that says, yes, we have a problem. And then our officers are able to respond in real time. And so that, that was the, the other part of this conversation that we agreed to have.
And I apologize, I didn't have that on the agenda. Yeah, and I, I think the, the district and, and the superintendent has even said a layered approach, I think was her term, is something that. We're willing to partner and work with whatever we can do to make sure our kids get to school safely. I don't know what the. Extent of a public health emergency would be. I know, Mr. Towery, we had talked that you had already reached out to the county. And it was kind of a no-go.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mayor. Just. For the record, the topic details are the second page of the agenda packet, not listed on the cover sheet. We do identify a number of issues related to the potential engagement with the county. We have asked the county on a couple of specific occasions. What we, what we haven't done and what we, what, what I thought our intent was in setting this conversation up. Was to, to again, have the policy bodies discuss. The merits, if there are any of, of formally asking the county to engage. In sort of a more comprehensive approach than a, an occasional one request to look at a particular area. The language in our ordinance is, is really reflective of what's in the state. There are really three issues. One is possible site contamination by hazardous materials. Two, a public health emergency. And three, other immediate danger to human life or safety. And those are the standards in the state law that would provide an opportunity to, to move to immediately abate. Dangerous situation. I, I do know that only the Board of County Commissioners can declare a public health emergency. The other two standards are, are standards that could perhaps be handled at the staff level. But with that said as background, we were looking for some discussion amongst the two bodies about whether or not we should somehow jointly engage. The, the county in a conversation around this larger issue.
Let's just go around the table. I see every, people are queued up here.
So it's just a clarifying, has someone already talked with Health and Human Services, with Lindsay Manfrin about having, being part of this conversation?
Yes, I, I actually spoke with Director, I've spoken with Director Manfrin on a number of occasions. I specifically talked to her. About the conversation that was, that was potentially going to occur tonight last week. And we had a, I thought. Lengthy and very productive conversation about what some options might be moving forward. But we also felt like giving the policymakers the, the opportunity to have that discussion would, would sort of help frame that issue up.
So then our possible next step then would be to convene a meeting with her and review the outcomes we would like to see regarding a potential for public health emergency. And then that then would be brought to the Board of Commissioners, possibly?
I mean, to be frank, I don't know all of this, I don't know all of the steps to be, to be quite frank, Director, but what we identified was a pathway that gives us an immediate solution, but we need the county partnership in that. And so I think it, I envisioned it more as a joint request coming from these two boards to productively and positively engage the county in giving us a more direct response.
I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
And councillor Chenowitz.
First, a question. My recollection, when we had this four hour meeting, was there was also another path forward for potential changing our enforcement strategy, being namely to define clearly what an established campsite was.
Yeah, and that would be a topic just for the McMinnville City Council.
Oh, okay, interesting.
We're here to talk about the areas around schools and how we can effectively create. So if that's something the council wants to take up on its own.
Right now, we're talking about how to change enforcement. This seems like it would fit right into that same topic.
Yes, but it would change our ordinance for the entire city. And so it's really, not that I'm not happy to hear the school board's opinion on that as well, but really the focus of having this as an agenda item was to focus on the areas that are around the schools. If that, if the council wants to engage in a broader conversation about overhauling the ordinance, that is absolutely viable topic of conversation, but it doesn't, it doesn't specifically target the school area problems that my understanding was we were trying to address in this joint meeting.
Okay. So I guess I would say I would oppose putting, having our bodies combined to put pressure on the, the commissioners for a request for a public health emergency to address a homeless problem within McMinnville, when we have two out of three items on that list that we can utilize already, we don't really need that one. So it seems to me like we're just going to set up a relationship problem between the commissioners. It's unnecessary to set up.
Anyone else?
I, well, on that note, and I had reached out, but I had not asked about this particular one. And just having experience living for 17 years down in Lane County, and 4J School District is one of the districts that got brought up in this, and I can tell you, having worked in that arena for 17 years, that the county's engaged. And the reason that Eugene sees different responses on this is that it is a partnership between school board, you know, the school district, the city, as well as the county, and that, that those three entities, as well as the nonprofit arena, are working in, in a collaborative partnership to move it forward. You know, I think the idea of looking at public health is really important because it is a public health issue. And as we hear descriptions and/or that there's video that if it's sewage that's been dumped, or if it's feces, or if it's needles, those are, those are public health issues. And if that gives us some teeth for a more rapid response, I would absolutely be up for having that conversation and building the partnership between all three of our entities to solve this solution. McMinnville is the largest population area in our county, so I don't think that's an unreasonable request for us to, not to put us as adversaries, but to build us as a collaborative partnership and how we do the best for our community at large.
Thank you. Others? Gerardo?
Mayor, so as far as you know, there is, any other cities that are working in collaboration with county?
Oh, yes. I mean, I just came back from the US Mayor's Conference. A hundred percent of the cities that were having success in addressing this were in partnership with their county.
See, that's the way it should work, right? That's the better way to go.
It is. A hundred, partnership is a hundred percent the better, in my opinion. It, I mean, partnership is always the way to go. You want to go far, you go together.
That's not a secret, right?
I don't think so. And, and, and I don't at all see it as adversarial. I honestly don't know why it would be taken as adversarial. It's, it's, we are collectively trying to solve our society's issues.
And I'd like to speak up on, when we talked about this, it wasn't about in any way being, we wanted a better understanding of when we should reach out, like when we do see needles and we know that they have dumped their sewage right outside our, on the sidewalks of our campus. When can we reach out? Like, what are the guidelines so that we can make sure that's addressed immediately? Waiting 72 hours to address that or sending my own staff out to have to deal with health issues puts them at risk as well. So it was more about having a conversation and a better understanding of how we can use that in dire needs, which we have faced in the recent last two months with other cities coming on to our, into our city and seeing that and being faced with that. It's just not, it would have been nice to know who we could have reached out to, to address that immediately. We can't wait 72 hours when there are major health concerns that are going to affect our students. So it was more about getting a better understanding and find out how we can work with the county to address immediate issues.
Yeah, just to underline what Dr. Brock is saying, that is, I think, what's before this body is, how do we have that reach out? How do we ask for that direction? How do we ask for that assistance?
And what qualifies?
And what qualifies?
My point was just to say, I think if they've already said no to us repeatedly, we have two other venues ahead of, in, in options on the list where we don't have to go where we've already been told no. It seems like, I mean, yes, if we can develop a relationship and develop where they're willing to do that, that's one thing. But it also, I would hate to see it be a situation where we're setting ourselves up for failure, expecting something to change that has already been kind of laid in front of us, where we have two paths to go down that hasn't been blocked in front of us already.
Well, respectfully, councillor, this path hasn't been blocked. We've very specifically asked to have public health emergencies declared, a public health emergency declared in specific areas. And that's not what we're putting before you. What we're talking about is how can we have an ongoing partnership with the county, so that when areas show up, that we're not calling and asking for a declaration of a public health emergency, but how can we have public health staff responding and saying, yes, we don't have to have a citywide public health emergency. Here we can clearly see there's a five gallon bucket of feces that has been poured out. This is not sanitary. And that gives us a different pathway. And we have not asked for that type of support. So this would be a unique it would be the first time of approaching it in this way. And, and so, and it's really a request for partnership in a different way than it has been asked for before.
And my apologies, because I thought we were going down the same path based on what he read. And if we were, I felt like this is kind of beating our head against a horse. If we are going down a brick wall, if we are going down a different path, then yes, I'd be all in favor of that, because obviously collaboration is better.
Other thoughts?
We're just always hot mic'd. So to councillor Chenowitz and Mayor Drapkin's points, you know, I would say the more tools that we can give in the toolbox for enforcement, the better. And so if new Supreme Court case comes down and says that establishment is what it currently is, even if we as policymakers on council decide to change that, you know, in the next few council meetings, if that gets on the agenda, having the ability to have a partnership with the county that we can still address things from a public health standpoint, especially near schools, but you see that dumping throughout the city. So I think it's worth having that discussion with the county, and if we can, as a joint body of the school district and the city council, come together and ask for that, it shows unity of two bodies, and why wouldn't they want to get on board and partner with their two biggest local, you know, elected bodies?
We go right? Mayor's right?
Councillor Payne?
Uh, thank you. I think, uh, councilman commissioner, I don't know. Director, thank you. I have something to add as well. Thank you councillor Chenowitz for, I was sort of under the same impression based on what we heard in our previous work session about Director Manfrin's involvement and what we were told and sort of confused under basically previous information. I, based on some research I did after the meeting, it sounds like maybe the sanitarian is also an option, just with the fecal stuff. In just motivating Director Manfrin to deal with that issue. So I would just kind of put that out there, because the sanitarian is the authority, so.
Yeah, and I do not know the way it function, the way, you know, I don't have the insight into the county to know exactly how it would function, so it really would be a request for all of that information and partnership and see how we could go forward, including all the technicalities.
Yeah, definitely. I appreciate the, the hope for the partnership, and I do feel like it's the best course of action and hope that it wouldn't go to the sanitarian to sort of push on Director Manfrin, but I agree that something needs to be done, and it's not, it's not safe for the conditions to stay the way they are.
I guess the, the question I had about this particular topic, we're looking for ways that we can immediately abate something that is in place that we, that we don't want there, a campsite or whatever. Is it possible to define, as best we can in writing, things like sewage waste, needles, drug paraphernalia, and I'm bulleting the most obvious ones that we have probably come across or have probably had to deal with on the grounds. And put that into any of the, the, the legal statutes that says, and under these circumstances, and at least bullet the five or six most common things that we have to deal with, and then encapsulate that within the same, within the same ordinance. There's a likelihood we're going to miss some, but if we can get the majority of ones that are, we're most commonly dealing with wrapped up in the same piece of legislation, I think there's value to that, if that's a possibility.
Yeah, and I think that's another question for the county, right? Because we don't have public, we don't have Health and Human Services at the city. And we don't, we don't have those health responders. We don't have a public health official. And so that's, it's, it's kind of that, that is exactly the vein of this. Where can we get this type of partnership so that we're able to not have a 72 hour period where we can go in and say, no, this, there's an immediate need for a change here?
All right, thank you.
I would support the collaboration with the county and going to the Human Health Services.
Okay, I'm going to recommend the next steps. Maybe we draft a, 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 a letter, feel like, I mean, I'm, I, obviously, our Board of Commissioners knows if they're not watching, they'll hear when you get home, sir, that we are, you know, going to be seeking collaboration there, so perhaps a joint letter to the BOC is the next appropriate step?
Based on some of the conversation I was hearing, Mayor, I was going to suggest kind of an interim step to that. I would invite Dr. Brockett and I to have a meeting with Director Manfrin and lay out some of the issues that we heard, and see if we can come up with a collaborative approach from a staff perspective to, to share back with the two bodies.
I always prefer that. That's great.
Think we have a plan. Does that work for you, Debbie?
Yes, that works for me. Wonderful. Thank you. Chair, if you are ready to move us to the next item, I feel satiated that we've talked about the two items under that one, just not in the 45 minutes we allowed ourselves.
I apologize, Mayor, and I didn't, I didn't realize capital bonding was next, and it is very exciting. Director Hall, I don't want you to think that we're not excited to hear what is coming for us. So Director Hall and, help me with that one?
Oh, and Director Quayar.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Drapkin, Chair Bazan, members of the board, city councillors, Superintendent Brockett, Jason Hall, Director of Finance, for the record. I'm here to introduce tonight Lauren McMillan from Piper Sandler, who's going to kind of give us a general overview of bonds, specifically general obligation bonds, and kind of how that looks for the city and for the school district, as we're both considering those in the next couple of years. So I will turn it over to her.
Thank you, and welcome.
Yes, and you can.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chair, board members, mayor, councillors, everyone. It's so nice to be here. Are you all ready to talk about bonds?
Yes, very much so.
Well, first, just a little bit about me. I have worked in public finance for almost 18 years, almost 15 of those exclusively in Oregon. So I have worked with a variety of cities and school districts and special districts across the state. So a wide variety of experience, but Director Hall here asked me to kind of come before you, just as you're both embarking on this potential journey with general obligation bonds, to just provide a little bit of information, because if you don't deal in this every day, there is a lot to know. So I have just a very high level overview in the interest of time, and we'll try and move through it pretty quickly, but please ask questions if you have any. And I assume, I think you have all the materials in front of you as well. So, why am I here? Well, the city, as far as I know, is considering a general obligation bond measure, no sooner than May of 2025 election for some parks and library facilities. And that's really as a result of a planning process that you've been working on for the last couple of years, right? So that shouldn't be a surprise, hopefully. The school district is also looking ahead at a potential geo bond measure, but they're a little bit farther out. I'm currently targeting November of 2027 election. Projects are really still to be determined. And as part of the process, the school district will undertake a long range facility plan and facilities assessment that's going to really help look at the current state of the facilities, and will help inform the projects that they undertake. Those are a requirement for this state matching program that's available for schools called the Awesome Program. And yes, the state thinks they're very cute with that acronym. So, bonds generally, the statutory definition is an obligation to repay borrowed money. So it's a fancy term for a loan. It can be broken into pieces and sold in the public market to multiple investors, or you can just go directly to a bank and have them loan you all the money. Municipalities issue bonds to finance various capital projects, right? And most of the time, they're things that you can't afford on a pay as you go basis, or you haven't, you know, built up reserves to cover those. So there's also a component of tax equity with geo bonds, because you're putting into place facilities that are going to be used by your, you know, constituents for years into the future. And so this allows future residents that move into your jurisdictions to help pay for those facilities. So, interest on municipal bonds is generally exempt from both federal and state income taxes. Now, what do I mean when I say that? That means that investors that loan you money don't pay taxes on the interest income they receive. So it just means that it helps lower your interest rate. It's a good thing. But it is, the federal government does see this as a benefit that they extend to municipalities, so there are strings attached to that, of course. So, general obligation bonds specifically can only be sold by municipalities. You, if you invest, you may see there are corporate bonds out there. That's a completely different thing. General obligation bonds are very specific to municipalities. And the repayment is secured by a property tax that's levied on all of the property within the boundaries of your jurisdiction. Now, it's also secured by what's called a full faith and credit pledge, meaning that if that tax levy was not sufficient to pay or Now, it's also secured by what's called a full faith and credit pledge, meaning that if that tax levy was not sufficient to pay your debt service, then any legally available revenues would be used to make that debt service payment. And it just means that it's a very secure borrowing. Investors like general obligation bonds helps you get a low cost of borrowing. The tax levy is dedicated to payment of debt service. You cannot levy something and say it's for geo bonds and then use it to pay for something else. It all has to be used on the debt service. So it's very limited in that respect. But the rate may fluctuate based on how property values go up or down. And so that levy rate may go as high as necessary in order to generate the amount that you need to pay your debt service. There is a limit. So the state law prescribes how much an entity can borrow. And for school districts, it's 7.95% of the school district's total real market value. That equates to just under 700 million. And for the city, it's 3% of your real market value, and that equates to just over 202 million. Now, what I will tell you is that the state limitation is actually very generous and most jurisdictions don't get anywhere close to that. If the school district went to borrow, you know, close to $700 million, the levy rate associated with that would just be astronomical. And so voters are likely not going to approve that. So these limits exist, but what you should know is that most jurisdictions don't get close to their legal limit. Really, you have to dig into what levy rate are your voters gonna support when you're going out and asking for a new bond? And there was something else here. My slides got a little. What's hiding there? Oh, it must be approved by voters. So technically, there are four election dates each year, but only May and November are not subject to double majority. So, everybody goes in May or November. Double majority means you have to get, you know, 50% plus one approval, but you also have to have a turnout requirement. You have to get 50% of registered voters to turn out. So, the easier threshold to meet is May and November. Also for schools, that, those are the only elections that the Awesome Grant is available for, that state matching program. So it's tied to each election, only May and November. Oh my gosh, what happened to these things? They didn't look like this, I swear.
Or is it like, did you print out this slide? It had to be converted?
Okay.
Oh, that's why.
Well.
The PowerPoint looks much better than.
We have it on our, on our desktops too, so.
Okay, good. They just look lovely up here. So you may wonder, what are your odds of getting a geo bond passed? Well, if we just look at the data, you can see that just over 56% of Oregon K-12 school district geo bonds have been approved from the period of May of 2010 to November of 23. And we go back to May of 2010 because that was kind of when some laws changed, so that's the period that we look at. And there is a slight distinction between May and November. If you look on the surface, it looks like May has a slightly better approval rate than November. I think November is about 54% and May is about 57%. I'm not a campaign person. I'm not a pollster. I don't know what the differences really are there. And this is statewide, of course. There can be a lot of things that feed into this, you know. The timing with the November election does coincide with getting your property tax statement. So maybe people are not, you know, super happy about approving additional tax measures after they've seen that. That could be a factor, but there's so many things that go into the demographics and your jurisdictions. You know, really, I would say it's about even between May and November and folks wanna focus on an election that works from their perspective, their timing and other things that go into this. Now for cities, this, it gets kind of skewed. You may say, oh, wow, well, cities have a better approval rate than school districts. If you just look at the same time period, over 62% of city geo bond issues have been passed. But the universe is much smaller than the school district pool. So the school district data has about 255 entries and the cities is just over 74. So it's a much smaller pool. It can skew this. Also, the amount of cities that go on May is only about 29. And those that went in November, it was a 45. So, take this data with a grain of salt. You know, you're not necessarily gonna have a better chance, I think, going in May versus November. It's really about connecting with your voters, doing the legwork and getting out there and figuring out what they're gonna support.
Can I ask a question about that, those, that data? Sorry. Does it make a difference if the bond's a renewal bond or a new bond?
You know, I don't have that level of data, but I would say that the narrative that we hear from folks is that it's much easier to pass a general obligation bond if you're timing it to where you have an existing bond measure maturing and where your levy rate is not expected to increase.
Thank you.
So, timeline. Basically, there's a lot of information here, but it takes a long time to put together a general obligation bond measure, basically from when you first start talking about it to when you actually get money in the bank. You know, you have to time with the elections. So we've already passed the deadline for the May election. So the earliest election anyone can go at this point, if they're not already on the ballot, is November. If the city is considering May of 25, then about a year from now, you're, you're gonna have everything figured out. It's already gonna be wrapped up and on the ballot. So basically by your February meeting of next year, you would have the resolution passed, the ballot title finalized, all of that would be done for a May of 25 election. Also important to note, you can see here, there's a lag for when basically your tax collections are going to come in. So for it's always gonna be the following fiscal year. So for a May election, you will get everything wrapped up, the bonds sold over the summer. So then the collections come in pretty quickly. So for the May of 24 election, tax collections will first be available next fiscal year, 24, 25. But if you go on a November ballot, it takes a little longer. You can't levy until the following summer. So a November of 24 election is not going to collect any taxes until fiscal 25, 26. And that's because it's timed with the property tax collection cycle, because you have to have everything in place before you can levy. This is kind of a, an estimated timeframe for decisions leading up to the election. You can see that you know, you're kind of starting down this path, having discussions about needs. Actually, I mean, the city's been already doing this, right? Going through your MACPAC process. And working through the needs planning. So that can, in some cases, happen years ahead of the actual election. And then once you've, in, kind of in tandem sometimes, you're looking at the needs and then you're also looking at the, the bond side, like how much, you know, here I have a project amount, but how much does this cost me? How, what does that translate to? So all the things, those things kind of happen at the same time, kind of feed into each other. And then as you get closer, about three or four months ahead of the election is when you're gonna finalize that resolution, which includes the ballot title and all the language. And that has to be basically adopted more than 81 days ahead of the election because 81 days is the deadline to file the paperwork with the county. And then magically you pass the election. Let's say your, your bonds are approved. The money just doesn't show up in your bank account the next day. Unfortunately, you do have to go through a process to get folks to lend you the money. There's an additional authorizing resolution that gets passed. And then if you're issuing bonds in the public market, a disclosure document, which both entities have issued bonds this way in the past. Also getting a credit rating and then actually selling the bonds. And this whole process takes about two and a half to three months typically from start to finish. So a May election, you're going to have your bonds sold and wrapped up by August and that times well with getting everything into the county assessor for levying the next year. November election will typically sell in about February or March for folks. So, you may be wondering what you can use the proceeds on. Well, state law is pretty generous and just that it's proceeds can be used for capital costs with a useful life of one year or more. So in general, that's gonna cover a lot of your large capital construction projects, but it's gonna cover related items as well. Like for schools, you can also furnish and equip those schools. And also, you know, purchase buses, different things like that. So if it can be capitalized, and this is a question, an accounting question, you can generally finance it with a geo bond. Things to know, there are restrictions. You can't borrow for 30 years and only finance something that's expected to last five years. Like, you can't borrow over 30 years and only buy computers because they're probably not gonna last 30 years, right? So there is a certain amount of matching the, the timeframe over what you're borrowing with what you're purchasing. And it can be averaged for the whole bucket of projects that you're doing, because most folks are doing more than one thing. They're not just doing, you know, a computer purchase or something. Let me skip ahead. So, you're very early in this process, but eventually, one of the questions that's gonna come up is going to be, I have a $10 million project. What does that translate to as the cost for my taxpayers? And that is the estimated levy rate, because that can be applied to your property, figure out how much it may cost you. And what we do is sort of craft the, the bond structure and project those, that levy rate over the life of the bonds. And one of the things that goes into that is interest rates. We don't know how, what your interest rate you're going to borrow at. You know, when you start these discussions ahead of the election and, you know, finalizing this levy rate estimate, you won't sell bonds and lock in that interest rate until months after the election, right? And you can see on this chart, which covers the US Treasury bond and a tax exempt index, interest rates are changing all the time. So I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what they will be when you sell. So one thing that we have to do is sort of look at current rates and then factor in a cushion for some of that volatility that happens between now and when folks actually lock their rate. The one thing I will tell you in looking back here is that, I don't know if you've, how close do you pay attention to interest rates? Interest rates have gone up over the last couple of years, right? But they were at historical lows. So you can kind of see that on, we're close to real averages over the last 15 years. Rates are still, I think, pretty reasonable, especially for tax exempt debt. Another big component is assessed value. So this is the property value that the tax levy is applied to. And it is different from a real market value. Real market value is the estimate of what you could sell your property for. The assessed value is decoupled from that. This is Oregon's really lovely property tax system. You know, if you guys are familiar with it. And generally, that assessed value is much lower than that real market value. Now, why that matters is because voters don't really know this, right? And when they take, they see that estimated levy rate, they wanna apply it to their real market value and think it's gonna cost them a lot more than it actually will. And so it's an important part of the conversation when this whole process gets going. You can see here that for the school district, and you guys have different boundaries, of course, the school district is a bit bigger than the city, but the school district's assessed value for the most recent fiscal year is about, is just about 50. Actually, they're both about 51% of the real market value. So there's a big gap between that real market value and that assessed value number. The other important thing here is we don't know what property values are going to do in the future. You're borrowing over, let's say, a 15, 20, 30 year period. We, we do know that you're probably gonna grow based on what's happened historically. So we look at what historical growth has been to come up with a conservative assumption of what value growth may be in the future. And you can see here that the assessed value growth is pretty steady for both, even when that real market value growth has had big swings and even declines. The assessed value is completely separate from that. We're also gonna look at what is your existing debt look like? Because if you're talking about a new bond, that may impact the timing of that next bond election. And also impact what that levy rate looks like. So the school district has a couple of issues, really, 2016 issue and a 2021 issue for just over 100 million. And then the city has a couple of issues outstanding from your 2015 and 2018 bonds. And what I think is more helpful is the next table. Oh, my graph.
It looked really, really nice on the PowerPoint. Well, I can confirm.
That's okay. So this is kind of hard to explain when it's missing. But you can see for the school district, this graph shows you what their historic levy rate has been. So in those dark gray bars, we have the actual levy rate that's set each year by the county assessor through 24, fiscal 24. And then we have the projected rates for their outstanding bonds. And you can see there's this nice drop, this nice step that opens up asked after fiscal 28. And that is an opportunity for, some folks like to call it a renewal, or just a new bond that does not raise the estimated levy rate. And so that really does impact your timing. Because it would be a great opportunity and either November of 27, which I think is what we said at the beginning, is a good timing. Or you would also be able to go in May of 28 and both of those elections would layer on that new issue with no gap. Now, the city. You guys, the city's levy rate looks a little bit different. So one thing I did notice is that your past issues have been structured with leveled debt service, which means that the annual payment remains the same. And so when the assessed value grows, it brings the levy rate down over time, which is fine. It just means it's not, it doesn't have quite the same look as the school district's levy rate. There's not as defined of an opportunity with that step. And a May 25 election would just layer on a new issue over your existing. But we could certainly look at structuring and, you know, work your new issue around the existing bonds to try and minimize that levy rate increase. And then the last thing that we kind of wanted to just like open up the discussion, I think, for folks was, you know, what collaboration opportunities could you look at? I will say, this is my first joint meeting of city and school district. And so I think it's really interesting that you guys are having this discussion and wanting to work together and really figuring out how you can complement each other's efforts and not step on each other's toes. But this, this part is really up to you guys to discuss. But if you do have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you. And our apologies for running a little long on our first agenda item. Any questions by any directors or councilors?
That's too easy.
I guess one, okay, I'll throw one at you. If and Jay, just Director Hall and I have talked about this before, but is it possible to go a year early for a bond and not actually sell the bonds?
So.
Meaning?
Yes.
Meaning if we, if we had the opportunity, could we go and ask the voters in May of 27 for approval? But not actually take the bonds to market until November of 27?
In theory, yes. So general obligation bond authorization does not expire. You can go to the voters and then you could wait. They, the only caveat there is the Awesome Grant does require at least the portion that you want, the matching portion for their grant. that you want the matching portion for their grant. So let's say they just changed the limits and I actually don't know off the top of my head how much you guys are eligible for, but it's now between six and 12 million. And basically, they say that within nine months of the election, you have to sell the matching portion. So you, you could go on the ballot, let's say for 25 million. But you would, you, you don't have to sell it all at one time. You can sell it in multiple series. But you would have to sell, if you want that awesome grant, you have to sell that, let's say, 6 million within nine months of the election and you could wait on the rest of it.
Okay. And the interest? There would, the going rate would be, the market rate of whatever the interest is from that time would start?
So the interest, the interest starts when you sell the bonds, not when the authorization is obtained.
Yes, thank you.
I know we can't see it on your screen. I can partially see it on mine.
Sorry.
Still not all the way. I was just curious if you have in your notes or if you knew kind of where it's pointing to on the city graph, what the, or if maybe Jennifer knows, what's the tax levy that's freeing up as you see that orange stuff kind of stepped down on the city side over the next few years?
Yeah, you have a slight drop from projected drop. What is that? It's even really small here. If that's, that must be 26. So it's from 27 to 28. And it looks to be, I would say about 25 cents projected.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but thank you for putting these. It's really fun to look at it side by side. And, you know, we're, we're sort of all aiming for the same goal, but it's nice that it's not, we're not at least at the moment stepping on each other's toes. So thank you.
Yeah, it does sound like the project or the considered timing for each entity is going to give you guys a couple of years apart from each other. And so, you know, you don't wind up on the same ballot. I mean, that does happen in other jurisdictions because in some places where they're not in as good of communication with other overlapping entities and you don't necessarily know who's going to file until it's too late. All of a sudden you're on the same ballot with, I don't know, the community college or, you know, somebody who has a competing bond measure. So this is a great strategy.
I think maybe one follow up to Jason's comment, having been part of three bonds, two successful and one not, it's important that we really are good with our campaign, but also have the runway to have a fallback position if we're not successful.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think to build on your comments earlier is the T A V discussion, the tax assessed value and getting constituents to understand that is the biggest hurdle, in my opinion, of getting one of these passed. And then to build on Chair Bazan's question, you know, if there is anything that we as counselors can do to support your guys' efforts, some of you being on bonds before, if there was gaps in your messaging that you think we could help support or things you could lend to us with your guys' track record of success over my 30 something years of living here. I think I would listen to anything the school district could share.
To take the general specific, this is very helpful. And if in the city's projected effort in the May of 25 election, I think it's, I welcome this joint effort now to learn about bonding and not that that'll be a joint effort, it'll be an individual effort, but a joint effort in what we're doing is so integral to your charge as well as our charge. I mean, it's almost an entirely concentric overlapping Venn diagram, to speak Carson. The, the way that you guys all use our facilities that we plan on addressing with May is, is, is so, is super integral. And so I hope we, A, this is a start and B, we come back and speak more about that as we, as we've marched forward with the Mac pack, perhaps some time on the future agenda to update on where we are again, as we've done prior, both at this level and at the facility subcommittee to, to keep the school district informed every step of the way. But as we start talking more and ramping up more and learning more about that, as we go poll the community this year and start to discuss at a council level and learn what the community wants, that has to have to be in conjunction with the support of the school district and school district understanding that every step of the way, the way you guys have propped up programs that are dependent on those facilities, as have we. It's going to be super critical to maintain your buy-in, support and understanding every step of the way as we do those. So.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. Very informal. Thank you. Informative.
Thank you.
Item four on the agenda, Superintendent Brockett and City Manager Towery will give us a report on our after-school care, also known as Campfire, formerly Kids on the Block. So I don't know which one of you want to kick it off?
So we just want to keep in conversation since 1989, when Kids on the Block first originated and came together in a joint collaboration with the school district and the city in developing a way to provide after-school care beyond our regular, what we would call Hour of Power for extra education after school, but then extend daycare services for our families so that they could continue working later and the kids would be safe. This originally started, just quick background, when there was a concern about some, a student particularly, but found out there were more that was afraid to go home because they were elementary age and they were going home alone and they were scared. So at that time, the superintendent worked in collaboration with the mayor and Kids on the Block was formed and they raised millions of dollars, from what I know, and funded the program so that we provided the facilities and the transportation and part of the funding in collaboration with the city to make sure our students had care after school and we weren't sending kids home to empty homes by themselves, which is not safe mentally or physically for students. However, we're to a point now where Kids on the Block is no longer fundraising. And Mr. Towery can correct me where I'm wrong, but at the beginning of this year, we had about 500,000 left for scholarships. When I entered the district in 2021, Kids on the Block was no more. They weren't supported in the same way after COVID. So we went into an IGA with Campfire. It's a lot more expensive because they do have to pay for that. But we still need scholarships. So what happened, the reason this is on the agenda, just for consideration and because they knew there'd be some great city, hopefully, individuals listening. Kids on the Block funds are down right about 300,000, I assume, since they just gave 200,000 to Campfire to help fund scholarships this year, which would last maybe one more year. So we are going to go into an IGA for one conditional year, additional year with Campfire. But there isn't an opportunity to extend after this year for these after-school, this after-school care for our families, unless we find another revenue source and partnership so that we can continue to fundraise and continue to provide scholarships. I think what's real important for everyone to understand, it's not that we don't want to. We just do not have funds to provide after-school care. And when we open after-school care, we have to make sure it's equitable access for all families, no matter their, their financial situation. If we're going to open after-school care, it needs to be for everyone. And some families can't afford Campfire, so there has to be funds to scholarship those families and opportunities for those families to also receive the after-school care. So we are now bringing this forward just to kind of discuss and put in awareness that we are down to our last year or next year, unless we as a complete community come together and find another way to continue to fundraise and provide opportunities for these scholarships for our families. Without that after this year, we unfortunately, as a school district, would not be able to sign into another IGA because we do not have the funds to support what is currently right about 250,000 a year in scholarship funds for families that can't afford the costs of Campfire. So that's kind of where we're starting. I'll let Jeff take it from there.
Thanks, Superintendent Brockett. A couple of other steps in the process. In mid-April, just a few weeks away, city, Campfire and all six grade school principals will be meeting to connect, engage with Campfire, talk about core mission and values and, and to really serve as a listening session for Campfire, the city and the district as well. After that, the city will coordinate a meeting with Superintendent Brockett, other leadership from the district and Campfire to set up a strategy for the longer term spend down of the remaining K O B funds. As Superintendent Brockett mentioned, we'll be extending the IGA by year as well as the agreement with Campfire for the next year.
Board or council comments, questions? Director Anderson?
What would be the longer range plan after next year?
If we don't have scholarship funds, we wouldn't have a plan. We would do our Hour of Power after school, which is intensive tutoring for students. But after that, then after-school care for families would not be able to be supported unless we find a long-term solution to offering scholarships for all families.
Is it also, is it being explored about grant opportunities through the federal government or the state for program development or program implementation? Are there opportunities for grants that we can maybe partner with the city to access?
Absolutely. We look at grants. We used to have the 21st Century Grant. And grants coming for these kind of programs are being looked at. Are not always received, so we have to make sure it's a permanent. We're always looking for grants, but what we have to remember is it would have to be, thank you for staying it that way, Director Anderson, it would still have to be in some type of partnership is the district is not going to be able to single-handedly own the after-school care due to where our grants serve. And many of the grants we apply for would take a partnership for us to be able to support it, to show it as a community partnership, not just the school district.
Counselor Gary?
Thank you. The, and I recognize I have an unfair competitive advantage on the subject, having spent many years kind of learning and, well, attending Kids on the Block. Thank you. And, and, and learning through technical advisory committees and studying the council's after-school assessment at a state level of how this works and how unique our setup is for good and bad. And, and as we are adding a year to the M O U, this, what, what has evolved to a joint contractual relationship with now a third-party provider, as we extend an additional year onto the three-year IGA we signed to try and build a bridge between these two groups to, to continue to offer the program. My request in the going forward in that last year is sooner rather than later in one of these joint meetings, we, we dive into that in an hour-long topic perhaps and ask Campfire to provide an update on their programs and the depth and breadth of what they offer and can provide. So we can make that decision on, on a known entity, a known provider, that we get all that information from the technical advisory committee, from the Oregon ASK assessment and sort of read and review that so these two bodies could work together to, to understand how we can build a bridge to the future for after-school programming and after-school care for the community.
President Garvin?
Thank you, Chair Bazan. You know, the, how we got here is over a number of years, I think K O B tech initially was a concept in 18 and really took off in meetings and May of 19 between both bodies. And then we have the Oregon ASK assessment as well, which is a lengthy document that I would recommend members of both bodies read as some of us were not here at that time when that came through. The main thing with K O B is that it was a heavily subsidized program. And the fees that were charged for K O B weren't sustainable for, for you to hire staff to do that. And then you, you pair that in with some of the work-study pivots that happened at the college level. It was harder to get staff to hire. And then just the, the rising minimum wage of the state also put some wage compression on the staff that we as a city could find for that. And then you look at, you know, the quality of, of service that was provided. I was a K O B kid myself and not that I had a bad experience there by any means. But you look at what Campfire is providing as far as a learning environment and programming for after-school care. It is next level. I've heard that from fellow parents. And so there is more value there as, as well as I feel that there's more equity in the process because it's not showing up at the community center steps because you are in a fluid family and can take the afternoon off and be the first to register. You actually have to go through a process to get a spot with Campfire. So I appreciate that as a, as a citizen and a parent that looks, you know, for there to be a fair shake for everybody that's applying. The other thing I also like with Campfire or a third-party provider is that we're not asking community center staff that don't know these students to identify scholarships strictly off of income because your principals and your staff know their students and, and can look beyond the W2 that their parents get or whatever that income trigger is and could, could ask Campfire for a scholarship. And so I think that's a positive of this agreement. And I, I do think it's important with the relationships that the school district has with students and their parents to take the lead in this after-school care. But I would acknowledge that proper after-school care is an economic benefit to the business community and the community in general. And so I, I think there is a position for the city to support it, but definitely not run it. And there's also a position for the business community to support this because it's going to put a drain on, on their staff in their businesses. If, if their staff needs to get off early to go pick up their kids or their staff maybe didn't go pick up their kids, but they're texting their kids every half hour or checking their cameras on their cell phone. And so your productivity of your staff is going down. So I think there is need for a holistic overview and a deep dive in this final year. And I personally would like to see it on our next quarterly meeting in June to have Campfire present what their metrics are, what their scholarship level is. Does it match the diversity metrics of our, of our community and of your student base? As well as have metrics polled for each individual school and see what schools are utilizing this and are they meeting the D E I metrics that we share throughout the community?
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate Council President Garvin's comments. I agree wholeheartedly with the sentiment behind them, but the concern that I have is that where the clock ends in a year without change regardless. So we can look at these metrics, but it's not going to really matter after a year unless we identify a long-term, stable funding mechanism to provide the scholarships for students through this program. Previously, that funding mechanism was essentially a, you know, the mayor's ball and volunteer fundraising. And it's clear that that was not sufficient to maintain the long-term integrity of the project, of the program. And so if this is something that we actually want as a community, then I think, you know, part of that meeting, when we do take this up, has got to be a conversation about funding mechanisms. Because otherwise, what's the point?
And just for clarification, Counselor Peralta, the, the mayor's ball funded the program. Just the people that were available to run it are not able to have that bandwidth right now. Is that?
The mayor's ball has not, has not provided any funding for that program for, I think, more than a decade. People who have been on the council longer than me can speak to that. But, but my understanding is we had, we had a significant, maybe a seven-figure carry forward that has gradually been spent down.
Yeah.
As we haven't identified in the last.
You're not, you're not hot miked.
Sorry.
My apologies. It just cost the city a tremendous amount to put this event on. Hours and hours of staff time. And we just are not likely to be doing that again.
I can finish my point. I would just say that, that volunteer donations, donations are not going to sustain this program going forward. We identified that as a fact. donations are not going to sustain this program going forward. We identified that as a fact in twenty nineteen through our council process. So if we want to have that kind of program and want to have that kind of offset, unless there's someone with the capacity to raise hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars, um, then we need to identify an actual dedicated funding stream to do this, I think.
Yeah, I think we need a little, oh, go ahead.
I, yeah, I just, there's sort of two trains of thought. There's one is I think what you're trying to operate, Sal, and I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, what, what you're talking about trying to continue operate is a heavily subsidized, joint-supported, jointly-run operation. Okay, because I, because I see the future forward as a, a competent, capable third-party provider able to secure grant funding and, and charge what I think Mr. W. Brockett said is a more expensive rate, but it, what, what that Oregon Ask Assessment showed is it's an accurate rate.
Well, what we have is that now. What we have is that now. Campfire is providing that now. Maybe somebody else could come in and provide a similar service, but the idea that it's going to be a lot less or a lot different, I just don't think is realistic.
Oh, correct, yeah.
So the question is, how are we going to fund that? Not, not that the city's going to run it or that anybody else is going to run it, but and the, I see your, your, your look at this, but, but we're hearing that we need to subsidize the program in order for uh, students to attend. So we could create a program and it's only available to uh, students who are not the poorest students in the community, the families that are not the poorest students in the community because we're not providing the necessary subsidy for it beyond the next year. That's my point. Is that we've got funding to subsidize that program for a period of time. After that, that will no longer exist. And what I, if I'm, maybe I heard it wrong, the superintendent said is that the school district can't run it if it's not equitable and available to everybody. And the money that they have to sup- provide the subsidy is going away. It's being spent down. So that's what I'm saying is, as that's getting spent down, we need to identify a long-term funding stream that's not just based on the student tuition.
I, I think this is why we need a longer work session on this. And I would just say, I think there are successful models that can accomplish that, that don't require the largess of the government to do that.
I, 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 obviously, we will collaborate on setting the next meeting agenda, but clearly this is of the utmost importance. And, and I think that there's a little history getting mixed up and lost in the conversation um, and detail that would be important for all of us uh, going, going forward. Um, uh, including that the uh, uh, K O B funds, I mean, exist in a nonprofit currently, i- unless I'm mistaken. Uh, Jeff, I'm kind of looking at you for confirmation on that. Um, so it's really that, that is the remaining funding. Um, and that nonprofit uh, had, was informed by, but not run by um, the city. And, and so there, there's all, just a lot of nuance and detail that um, I, I think it's, this is a ripe topic for conversation because we want to have that detail correct as we look to the future. Mr. Towery?
Thank you, Mayor. So I agree that there's a lot of work to be done and that's one of the reasons we agreed to extend the I G A for another year so that we're not under the gun in the next five months to, to finish the work. And we've already made reference to some documents that we don't all have ready access to, that we don't all remember, and that's okay. And we're not going to force anybody to go spelunking in your own archives. So uh, we'll work with the superintendent's staff and we'll make sure both elected bodies get the full breadth of the kind of information um, that we've already made reference to in terms of some of the formal documents. Uh, and we'll, we'll work together to craft a thoughtful and intentional work session for this body down the road. This joint body. Thank you.
Counselor Payne? Taking turns calling on people.
Thank you. I have a question. Um, and that goes back, I guess, to the need for a work session that gets more into the depth of the need for the conversation. Um, I too am a, a Kids on the Block kid and did enjoy my time there. Um, my, my questions are really about the, the management of the, of how it's being funded now because it is not solely scholarship-funded at this time. It is, it receives E R D C funds, it receives parents' funds who are paying the, you know, the four-twenty or the three-ten or whatever for one, two, three, or four, five days a week, um, which roughly equates to almost twenty-five dollars an hour. So um, I'm curious what the barriers are to making it accessible to everybody that are beyond the cost. Is it staff? Is it the availability of facilities, et cetera, et cetera?
Uh, and uh, what's that model applied to the Washers, Washer School, which is a school not in the city of McMenville's tax base, but in the school district itself? How does that one work independent? To tag a question under her.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the two questions. So the model is a joint partnership between the district and the city?
Well, no, not technically. A- and I think this is a good reason for the, to, to expand this issue because that, that's there, there are, there is a lot of information, but we are having kind of fractions of accuracy, I think. Um, and, and I don't, uh, I am not an expert, so I, I don't want to, to define exactly what's accurate, what's not accurate, but um, there are uh, but, but, but I know that is not accurate necessarily. And I think the question related to Washer is that because uh, there, the Washer is not in the city of McMenville, there were city of McMenville raised funds that didn't go forward to that school, but again, that is detail that we need to dig into a little bit more thoroughly. So we, the city and the school board had, came uh, together into an I G A about three years ago that was supposed to unwind this year a- at the end of this year. And currently, what's before, what, what we're pursuing is another year, right? Another year because we have this unanswered question currently, which is what happens to after-school care?
And I think the question asks the obstacle. The obstacle is the additional funding to ensure equitable access for all students. Um, if we don't have any kind of additional, we do get the grant funding, we do give, it doesn't cover all the scholarships. That's why the um, Campfire came forward to the um, K O B board, I think last week, last month, Jeff can confirm that, to ask for some additional funds to cover the expenses of the program for the uncovered costs for scholarships. So that is the concern there is if we don't have a way to subsidize those that can't pay um, our most at-risk population, we wouldn't with good mind be able to offer an our buildings as we do now. We have the facilities, we're still doing the bussing, we're still providing the snacks during the time, but we can't provide the scholarships to keep kids in the program. So I think the conversation's going forward is what does that look like? And when we were on the phone with Campfire, on the Zoom meeting with Campfire last week, that's where our April sixteenth um, conversation is going to look like. But they didn't, they had issues getting some of the grants they had received in the past as well. So grant funding is great when it is there. It's painful when you don't get it. And to shut a program down in the middle of the year, because as long as we can get grants, great. If we find another fundraising source or community partnership, however, we do it to keep funds in the bank for those emergency days, that's great. And if grants come in, we never touch it, but we continue to build up what we had originally with this is a reserve of funds that we could continue to support this after-school care when grants didn't go through. Um, this year, grants didn't go through at the same rate. They had to fall back for the last two years for a higher rate. So that's what we're looking for now. And that's why it came to the tables because we did get back into a one-year I G A because we were talking about it just ending completely. Very concerning. We know kids need after school, after-school care. Um, so I think that's where the conversation goes. So when you ask about what the obstacles are, they really are that um, being able to subsidize the parents that cannot afford the program but still need the care. And where do we have those funds available to do that?
Council President?
So to reframe Counselor Payne's question, what I heard was she was wondering what is uh, the barriers beyond cost for enrollment numbers? Uh, so is that the lack of uh, facility size or is that the lack of staffing levels by Campfire? What, what is an op- obstacle for enrollment? And then uh, Counselor Gary's question was how does Washers Independent I G A with just the school district and Campfire differ from what's going on in McMenville schools and how is Washer being subsidized currently?
Uh, Mayor, Chair, uh, so thi- this is the, exactly the kind of conversation that we would help structure for a focused work session. They're all great questions. Some of them can be answered by the research and the documents that have already been put together. Some of them can be answered by uh, some of the information that our respective staff and Campfire gather over the next couple of months. Some of it can be answered by Campfire when they present. You know, I've heard at least a, at least a handful of you say we should have Campfire at an upcoming meeting. I'm seeing head nods uh, substantially around the table. So, so we will be back to you with more information. I think once you get the chance to, to read through some of the information that we've already gathered, that may answer some of your questions. It's likely going to raise others as well. And we'll work to gather what those questions are before we build a work session and uh, do our best um, to bring that information to you. Again, um, a work session's an important piece of this, but that won't be the only touch point with these two policy bodies over the next year and a half or so because there'll also be some decisions that need to be made and need to engage all of the elected officials in those conversations as well. So I appreciate the interest and, and great questions and observations. I think it sets us up for a successful series of conversations over the next year, year and a half.
Thank you, Mr. Towery and Dr. Brockett. Appreciate the, the dialogue and to uh, counselors and fellow directors, thank you uh, for the conversations tonight. All of the, all in attendance, thank you for sticking with us and those online.
Before you complete, can I say something for the good of the order?
Sure.
Um, so at our last city council meeting, I corrected Zach Gary on a particular uh, comment regarding, he stated that there was a survey in which the most important item found on that survey by our voters was the desire to keep our parks serviced. And I corrected him via Zoom and I was incorrect in that correction and I didn't want to address it until I was in front of him. So now that I'm here, I'd like to apologize for that correction and state for the record that you were correct.
That's your record, not mine. You should uh, thank you, everybody online. Uh, I'll call, anything else for the good of the order, I guess.
Well, I also want to say, uh, thank you, city councils, uh, mayors, and then for the opportunity, I keep saying all the time that with this kind of a partnership, this collaboration, uh, we can do that, that a lot of things. We're going to get something good out of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
The McMenville School Board of Directors will adjourn at eight fifty-three.
And McMenville City Council Joint Meeting adjourns at eight fifty-four P M.
Thank you.
Thank you.